The side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying, "Thank you, Lord God. Thank you for this day that you have made, Lord." Lord, as we continue to go through our day-to-day journey, Lord God, we just ask that you cover us and keep us, Lord God. Continue to cover our city, cover our police and our fire, Lord God. And, Lord God, continue to keep each and every resident safe. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Alexander.
President.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Racles.
Here. There are nine present here. He will absent. Mayor's address.
Hi. Thanks, Councilman Racles. Good to see everybody. Want to start off with something that's, if it hasn't happened today, it's going to happen shortly. Not sure if it's happened officially. From the Environmental Protection Agency, that's about to classify certain parts of our city as a superfund site. So I wanted to talk to you about this. This isn't anything that's surprising. It's the only thing surprising about it's happening today. Want to remind everybody's concerns of Federated Metals site. Federated Metals on the north basin of George Lake. And for the better part of 100 years, it's been a polluter in the city Hammond. It was lead, primarily. Lead's a heavy smoke. And when it left the smokestacks, in like the twenties, thirties, forties, and fifties, that's what we're talking about, all the way through the eighties, which is when it started cleaning up. But when it, the smoke would leave the smokestack, and we have prevailing northerly winds here where we live, the smoke would go up in the air and start blowing north. And it's a heavy smoke because it's lead, and lead would be in that smoke, and lead would literally, for decades, rain down on the neighborhoods. And then we'd get to Lake Michigan, where it would wash into our water. But basically, anybody that lived from a prevailing wind direction away from Federated Metals, you could test their yards and find lead. Not from the eighties, nineties, two thousands, twenty teens. It's from like the 1940s, 1950s, and 1960s. And they've lived this way for decades. We've known about this for decades. The city's known about this. The federal government's known about this. When I took over as mayor, the north basin of George Lake was drained, and the US EPA scraped it and filled it. They didn't complete the job. They didn't do the houses. They didn't do the yards. They didn't do anything but a small section of the north basin of George Lake, which was better than nothing. But here we are. In 2016, Governor Holcomb visited this site, went to a few homes, and I've scratched my head because we all knew that it was a hot area, and Governor Holcomb knew it was a hot area. And then in 2020, US EPA visited Whiting and invited us and explained to us that they planned to do a superfund site in that area, which encompasses Federated Metals. When I tell you that, I know how many properties in Hammond are affected, 112. And this problem in Hammond, those 112 properties, cost us about $5 million to clean. And we did it ourselves. I'll get to that in a second. To give you an idea of the magnitude of the problem this is for Whiting, it's 10 times that. Simple math, we're talking about a big number. And that's, in Whiting, it happened from a Hammond plant when I was not even being thought about. My dad was a little boy. So this goes way back. It's a polluter. US EPA is going to declare that area a superfund site, which includes the homes in the area. They're going to draw the boundaries, including about 112 homes in the city Hammond, and areas around there. The bike trail, it's been like this for decades. It's nothing new. Been like this since everybody in here was a little kid. There's people I know that grew up in that area. There's a lot of people, Councilman Mark knows, that grew up in that area, and they're just fine. US EPA is going to do something about it. EPA won't begin cleanup for at least seven years once they designate. It's going to be a long process, which is why the city Hammond decided, with the help of the Hammond Council, to help out the people that live in this area. We made a decision using ARP money to clean up the people who lived in this area's front and backyards if they were greater than 400 parts per million. And there was 112 properties that were greater than 400 parts per million. And in 1920, in 1920, US EPA did some of the houses, a couple of them in Hammond, a couple of them in Whiting. We got an idea of what they were looking at. Hammond Department Environmental took the lead, along with Enviro Forensics, a firm out of Indianapolis, and we started doing the properties ourselves. Once we'd cleaned the properties, we would certify them through the Hammond Department Environmental Management as clean. We'd certify it with a stamp and file it with the Recorder's Office. I don't know if this is going to make the federal government happy, but I imagine it's going to make the homeowners that live in this area happy. Because if you own a home in this area, and you're now being declared a superfund site, and it's going to take at least a decade to clean that area up, good luck selling that house. I don't think you're going to get the same price you were thinking about yesterday, tomorrow, for that house. So we made a decision as a city to clean up these properties. I'm proud that we did this. I appreciate the council's support in that. I think we need to remind our residents that. So this is not a shock to us. But it's coming now. And if it wasn't declared, I guess I'm unofficially declaring it now at the council meeting. This is happening, it was supposed to happen today, if it hasn't happened already. So I want to thank the council for helping us with this project. We've done a number of them right now. We've done 21 properties remediated by the EPA, 12 properties remediated by Hammond in 2021, 28 properties remediated by Hammond in 2022, 30 proposed remediation in 2023. Properties with lead less than 400 parts per million, which is, that was the breakpoint for us. If it was above 400, that's action zone for EPA. We made it our action zone. There's 11 properties with PPM less than 400 parts per million, so we didn't do that. Eight properties denied us sampling access. They wouldn't even let us test their property. They're on their own. Good luck with the EPA. We tried to help you. They literally wouldn't let us on their property. Now, now it's superfund. They get to deal with US EPA. Two denied remediation access. So out of the 112 properties, 10 of them didn't give us the ability to get their property done. Now they have to deal with the federal government. The other 102, we did 70 of them already. We're going to do 30 this year. So that was with $5 million we designated from ARP. It makes us look real smart right now. I'm not gloating, no, because our neighbors Whiting are really, really going to be hurting on this. I really feel bad, especially considering it was a Hammond plant that did it. It was. But I was zero years old in 1950s. So, yeah, Councilman Mark?
Mayor, do you know whether the US EPA is also helping anything with Whiting as a superfund?
Councilman Mark, absolutely yes. We're part of it, the small part.
Is proclamation?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And the 101st home homes you talked about that got cleaned up, will they still, how will they bear this? Will they still be part of the cleanup with superfund?
Good question. I doubt it because it's clean. Okay? But keep in mind, so let's say my backyard is the bike trail. My backyard's clean because we cleaned it, Hammond Environmental. And then the bike trail is a path. And then on the other side of the bike trail, it's probably greater than 400 parts per million. So your yard is clean, but you're surrounded by land that's not because it's not privately owned. It's owned by us. That's got to be cleaned up by EPA, which means they're going to have to go two feet deep to clean it up, like we did. This is not cheap. Government's going to pay for it. It's not going to be, if this is done a decade from now, I'll be proud of them. If this is done a decade from now. That's why we did what we did. I'm proud that we did that. I appreciate your support on this. Now the EPA is making it official, and we are ahead of the game, thankfully. So thank you for working with the administration on that. I don't know if anybody has questions on this. And I would also defer to Councilman Spitali as a realtor. I imagine he knows how devastating this is going to be on that whole area. Yeah, Councilman Mark?
And so the EPA will begin the process in what year?
There did.
Begin the process, this order?
Yes, sir. And ultimately, so we spent $5 million. I think if we waited a decade, we wouldn't have had to spend $5 million. So we made the decision to spend the $5 million, even knowing that if we would have waited, the federal government would have done it. We did it for those residents, though, that are trying to sell their house. Now, they don't have a decade to wait. That's why we did what we did. And.
And we should finish this year.
Yes, sir.
Once we.
We still have money left. We're going to finish the last 30 this year. And all properties, except for the 10 that didn't either allow us to sample or allow us on the property, we did all 112 properties besides those 10. Yes, sir. Questions? I have a couple more things. Yeah, Councilman Emerson?
I hesitate to ask this question. Are there any other that the EPA is looking at in Hammond?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. We've known, Councilman, when I took over as mayor 20 years ago, we knew about this site. And then EPA drained it, and we knew that they didn't finish the job. Hopefully, they'll finish the job this thing. Because quite frankly, that's an area that we could develop down the road. It's a beautiful area. The north basin of George Lake is gorgeous. If they would clean it up, we could actually develop it maybe. So let's hope for the best. We did the residents. There's still work to do in Hammond. Okay? So, and the EPA is going to pay for it. And the way they do it, they pay for it with lawsuits. They'll try to go after the owners of Federated Metal and all the subsequent owners. They'll try to get it through lawsuits like that. And if they get money, they'll use it to, and if it's short, then the government comes up with the rest.
So will the buildings likely come down that day?
I hope so, Councilman Mark. I hope so. It's a I-SOAR. Any questions on this? Yeah, Councilman?
Mayor, I know we were, like you said, being proactive about cleaning up those properties for the residents. But wasn't, maybe I got this wrong, but I thought we were also trying to prevent the area being labeled as a superfund site?
No, we always knew. And I appreciate the question, Councilman. We always knew that, like I was saying, your backyard may be clean, and then it goes to the bike path, and then on the other side of the bike path, you got the land that goes down to George Lake. We always knew, we were cleaning up your privately owned property. We always knew there was work to do after that. That's what we're talking about. The privately owned parts, except for those 10 parcels, are done, thankfully, at the tune of $5 million, a little more. But there's still plenty of work to do in the city, Councilman. And I imagine for the next decade, we'll be talking about this project. We'll be watching it slowly progress for the next decade, or so. It could be longer. This is a slow process. That's why we did what we did. Thank you on that. Let me just go through a couple other things real quick. I appreciate your patience, Councilman Racles. And I want to thank HC3 for the parade in Hessville, even though I didn't get to go this year. I heard it turned out great. To remind everybody, we have a St. Patrick's Day Parade in Hammond. HC3 throws it in Hessville. Even though it was a construction zone, I heard it was really well attended. So congratulations, HC3. Lansing Water Rights, I talked last council meeting about what I thought would be litigation. I'm happy to report, we have great lawyers that are very charming, and they talked litigation out. We're working on a final agreement with Lansing. I think it's going to be successful. So that's good news. Councilman Barry, we're going to be talking to you about a new TIF district we want to create right around City Hall. Call it the City Hall TIF. I'm not sure if you've heard about this already. But we have opportunities with a couple developments that are taking place close to City Hall, where we could capture the increment from those developments and use it to do things like the outlets we want to do on both sides of City Hall. We could use the increment on other projects. Those projects are Swanell. They're doing a big expansion. We can capture the increment before it's invested. That's good for us. And the other one is a potential relocation of U-Haul into the third district. Well, it's still in the third district, but into a new location where they would invest a lot more, and it would be multimillion dollar investment. And if that happens, we can capture the increment from those two investments to help spur other development in the third. So we're creating this TIF district. It'll obviously go through the council when we're doing that process. It may be making its way through the redevelopment commission shortly. Doesn't raise taxes on anybody. What it does is it captures a snapshot of the area as it is right now. Nobody loses on this deal. Everybody that pays property taxes to the tax base stays. But if we get a brand-new development right next to City Hall, the increment there would go to the TIF district to help pay for the debt. So let's hope it works. Speaking of the school board tomorrow, I'm appearing before them, talking to them about Gavitt High School and Clark High School. I know we all talked about that a couple meetings ago. I want you to know that I followed up in a meeting with the school board tomorrow. We got Mayor's Night out on Wednesday at the Last Marsh, just to prove to you that these are randomly timed, and I show up for everyone. This is going to be an interesting one with the recent announcement. I got Mayor's Night at the Last Marsh on Wednesday, so I imagine Councilman Mark and I should pack a lunch that day. Disabilities Breakfast is on Thursday. I'd invite all councilpeople to attend. It's always a great time. It's at the Dynasty, 8:00 AM. And I am donating all proceeds from a GoFundMe. That's why my hair is so long, to the family of Karina Almerez, who's battling Hodgkin's lymphoma right now, and could seriously, her family's going through a lot right now. Karina Almerez, I have a GoFundMe on my Facebook page, on the city's website. If anybody would be willing to donate a couple bucks, we're trying to get to $10,000. 100% of the money we raise on the GoFundMe goes to Karina. 100%. There's no middleman. It goes straight from GoFundMe to Karina's family. Last year, we did over $15,000 for the family, and right now, we're sitting at about $6,000. So please help out and donate, and 100% of your proceeds will go towards Karina's family. Unless there's any questions, I want to say sorry about the long report.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Councilman.
Next up, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Most accepted minutes from March 13, 2023, be placed on file.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Approval claims passes 9-0. Public hearings, we have none tonight. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I request approval of claims, beginning with claims dated March 15, 2023, and ending with claims dated March 22, 2023, claim number 1663 through claim number 1966 inclusive, in the amount of $7,820,713.38.
Motion, approval of claims, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Approval claims passes 9-0. Public hearings, we have none tonight. Communications.
Mr. President.
Alexander. Sorry.
The last day for students to apply for the Hammond Common Council Scholarship is on March 31st. All applications should be turned in to their guidance counselor. Please have guidance counselors, please make sure those applications get to Dr. Roush on or before March 31st. And on April 24th, we will be doing the drawing for 15 $1,000 scholarships. And then these scholarships will be awarded on May 22nd during our council meeting. So I'm encouraging students that if you have not got that application, it's one of the easiest ones you will fill out. Fill out that application, get it over to your guidance counselor so that they can get it back, and we have a drawing. Thank you.
Any other communications?
Mr. President. I just want to congratulate the Hammond Central Wolves on their historic season. They brought our city first boys' regional basketball championship since 1954. They only lost one game during the regular season, didn't lose to any Indiana schools whatsoever, and were ranked number three in the state. They fell short in a semi-state game, but I know that a lot of those kids will go off to college, and the ones that are remaining will come back and do great things next season too. So looking forward to seeing if they can build off their success from this year. So congratulations to Coach Larry Moore Jr. and the entire team.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications closed. Next up, committee reports.
Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch groups. On April 12th, Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, April 12th, at 1:00 PM. East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will be Tuesday, April 18th, 6:00 PM, at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, April 4th, 6:30 PM, at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet 6:00 PM on Thursday, April 20th, at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, April 14th, 9:15 AM, at Irving School. That is a bilingual program. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet Thursday, April 13th, 6:30 PM, at Trinity Lutheran Church on the corner of 173rd and Holman. Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April 13th, also, 6:30 PM, at Calumet College. And as usual, I urge everyone to attend a community or crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other committee report?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I did have my notes from the Capitol Improvements Board, but I think I grabbed the wrong folder when I left the house, so I'll give the report the next meeting. Although, Councilman Kowinski and Councilman Torres did request some streets to be repaved, if you guys want to say what those streets were.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Yes, I requested overly for 119 streets in Robertsdale from Calumet Avenue to Aggison, also in Robertsdale to Caroline to full length along Forsyth Park, and also Johnson Avenue from the train tracks north to its end in its entirety. That one gets a lot of traffic from the railroad and the two schools that are above Johnson. Hoping to hear soon regarding if there are funds and which streets in my district might be eligible this year. Thank you.
Yes, for the second district, requested Goslin between Columbia and Calumet Avenue, Hoffman between Calumet and Holman Avenue, and 150th Street from Calumet to Columbia and Michigan Street, from Calumet to Holman Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I apologize. I mean, I brought the wife's car, and she told me I left some stuff in it, so she probably threw it away, but I'll find it, as far as the notes from the meeting.
Councilman Kowinski, you have a committee report addition?
I just want to add to what's been said about CID. The president for the Capitol Improvement Board also mentioned that at that time, he still hadn't received requests from all the districts. I think there are at least four districts that have given their requests, but I'm hoping that he's not using that to hold up which streets will get done in what districts. So if anybody hasn't turned those in, I think it probably would be beneficial to itself and every other district to do that ASAP before those funds are secured.
President, in addition, we're happy to report that Summer Street got approved for a $14 million project between Columbia and Indianapolis. That is to be started early May. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Torres. Any other additions to the committee reports? Any other committee report? Any reports opposed? Next up, ordinance, third and final reading, we have none. Introduction of ordinances.
Item 8, ordinance 23-10, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spitali, and ordinance respecting and ratifying the actions of the City of Hammond, Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety, related to traffic regulation for 2022.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2310.
So.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Spitali for 2310. First and second reading, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I did not request a committee meeting on this because we have been notified throughout the year of all of these requests that have come into the Board of Works. This ordinance does nothing other than ratify the requests that have come into the Board of Works that they have approved for stop signs, restricted parking, resident-only parking, and that is it.
Thank you. So it'll be first and second reading tonight, and final passage will be the next meeting?
Next meeting, yes.
It should be the day after Easter, I believe.
April 10th. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
President Racles, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Next up, resolutions.
Item 8, Resolution 23R-02, sponsored by Councilman Torres. A resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving the First Amendment to Development Agreement among the City of Hammond, Indiana, the City of Hammond Redevelopment Commission, and Linz Enterprises LLC regarding the project at 628 Hoffman Street.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for final passage of Resolution 23RO2.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Vines, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Developer is Linz Enterprise LLC at 6828 Hoffman. It is a meat packaging and processing plant is being built there. And because delays in construction and other subtle change issues, the developer has sought an extension of various deadlines set forth in the development agreement that was dated May 5, 2022. Thank you, Mr. President.
There's also an Exhibit A to this resolution, correct?
Yes, there's an Exhibit A, Exhibit 8A that is attached to the resolution.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Do we need to amend this in?
It doesn't, I don't know.
It's part of the resolution.
The exhibit, does it need to be amended into the ordinance?
I'll refer to our lawyer on that.
I think when the motion was made, it included Exhibit As.
Yeah. Councilman Kowinski.
Just a question. Is this the only extension they will receive? Will we be looking at others in the future? I'm just wondering if we're capping it to this once and only event? Or is it open-ended for a reason?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I am sure that if it needs to, another resolution for whatever the purpose is, the redevelopment department and the developer will present it at that time.
That's right. You're right.
Any other discussions or questions, comments? Any discussion?[1761.31] Any discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes nine zero.
President Rakels, that concludes the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. New and unfinished business. Councilman Koinski.
Two quick announcements. One is the Association of Women Monthly Meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, at 6:30 at the Hammond Wolfhouse Club at. And the second thing is that Mayor's Night Out will be Wednesday in the first district at the Los Marsh Golf Course clubhouse, starting at 6:30. Everybody's.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. We have public expression. First up, Edith Puthie. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce the name. U-T-H-I-E or Puthic, possibly? Not here?
Yes.
Next up, Ken Rosen.
Greetings, Commons Common Council. Councilwomen, Councilmen. President Rakels. Of course, you know, the reason why I'm up here is to talk about the bridge project in Hessville. I noticed in the Northwest Indiana Times, I mentioned a lot of different projects going along in Hammond, but of course, that one was left out. I think we need to make note of it. One of the things that's going on in Hessville that you might not know, guess what didn't happen in Hessville last week? We had no parked trains for over 10 minutes. Why? I think it's because of community action. From the time that the trains, the, the Common Council funded this project and to just after the New Year's, the, the trains were parked an awful lot. Okay? And that was evident to the residents of Hessville. One thing that didn't happen though is that no train was parked for four days straight, which was mentioned several times. Never happened, not even one day. Okay? But we started doing something. We went out there and we started monitoring the trains. Okay, this right here, this is a trail cam, costs a little under 100 bucks. We have several of them now in residents' backyards monitoring the trains. We've got timestamps and everything. We go out there and, and you can actually get these right on your video and what's going on. We also video the engineers and see what they're doing. As soon as you start videotaping them in one instance, all of a sudden, they will rev up their engine and take off. Why do we think this is happening? Because we have been contacting several organizations and departments in the United States. We have been tweeting and writing letters and taking videos. We take pictures of the kids hopping trains and crawling under trains, which, by the way, this bridge will not solve. That issue is unresolved after the bridge project is completed. Let's make that perfectly clear. The kids will still be tempted to hop the trains at the Grand Cross. So we've been tweeting, writing letters to the U.S. Department of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg, the NTSB, National Transportation and Safety Board, the Committee of House and Transportation Infrastructure, and the Subcommittee on Freight Rail Safety. We have also been contacting the Canadian National Railway. Every time we tweet, we add them on it. Now, since the East Palestine tragedy that happened in Pennsylvania, this is a hot item. And the, excuse me, and the, the railroad doesn't want the grief any longer. They are a hot topic and they need to deal with this right now. They don't want us complaining, they don't want us posting pictures and things. And now the train traffic is down dramatically. My point is, you really need to take action. This is not the Norfolk and Southern Railway any longer. This is Canadian National Railway.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Next up, Carl Wolf.
So my brother, a couple of weeks ago, sent me a, well, sent all of us, Wolf's, an article from The Guardian, which is a newspaper out of England. And they had an article about pollution in the United States, particularly around particulate matter in the, in the air. And the findings of this study that was done by the University of Washington showed that across the contiguous U.S., I'm reading from the article, "The neighborhoods burdened by the worst pollution are overwhelmingly the same places where Black and Hispanic populations live." "The fine particles of air pollution emitted by cars, factories, wildfires, and dusty agricultural activities known to researchers as PM 2.5 are small enough to travel deep into the lungs and into the bloodstream, increasing death rates from causes like respiratory disease, heart attacks, and strokes." And so here they list the 10 hottest spots in the country. And of course, coming in at number four, in between Indianapolis and Chicago's south and west sides, is Northwest Indiana. And in particular, they break it down by area, showing the hotspots of micrograms of particulate matter 2.5 per cubic meter. And hotspots for EPA action level are 12 micrograms of PM 2.5. And the entirety of Hammond, save for South Hammond perhaps, which is still in the red, but the entirety of Hammond is in a hotspot, demanding EPA action level. The entirety, where you live, where you live, where we all live. And for years now, we've known this. We knew this when Carolyn Marsh and Marissa Ransich and Swan were talking about what was going on at Federated Metals and at Whiting Metals, which I think, is it closed down now? Were they shut down? We knew this. We knew this when we say we don't want a bridge to bring in more car pollution. In fact, we need more green space in this city. We know this over and over again. And what the council does and the city, which is wonderful in many ways, with the trains and the bike paths and so on, it's great. But come on. Get started.
Thank you. Linda Aguiano.
Hello, everybody. I just want to talk a little bit about East Palestine, Ohio, because I don't know if many of you knew, but there was expected to be 30,000 trucks of toxic soil and water to be removed from that area. And one of the places it was sent to was Houston. And this representative there rallied, rallied the community and they blocked them from entering Houston and said, go back to Ohio. I made numerous calls to their office to see how they accomplished that. They also went to Michigan and Michigan did the same thing. We don't want that toxic. Our governor didn't even know that the EPA had decided to send this to Indiana. And they were planning to send 500 trucks of this. Well, he was outraged because he learned third-hand. Nobody told him, EPA didn't call him. They didn't even take any feedback from him, what he thought about this. And the landfill is in a lovely town called Rochedale and it's just 40 miles west of Indianapolis. And so our governor, who is a real environmentalist, especially, you know, for Republican, it doesn't really matter if you're Democrat, Republican, independent, or libertarian. He really cares about the environment and he released a press release that he didn't even know about this until it was already sent. He was able to talk with the EPA director and he was able to get an agreement that if there was dioxin in this material, then it couldn't go to the facility in Rochedale because they're not equipped or licensed to handle material that has dioxins in it. And a friend of mine and I, we called the state legislators, the, you know, state rep, the senators, we kept calling the governor's office, and this was really hidden. And this material, can you imagine 500 trucks? I just guessed that because of where Ohio is located, they would take 80 and then come down 65. And if there was an accident, you know, we'd be like the headline of the Northwest Indiana Times. Could this happen here in Indiana? So I believe that it's a clear example of how we need to be very protective of our environment. Three trucks did make it there and they did find dioxins. But now EPA is saying, oh, it's not enough dioxin to pose a problem. So I'm just sharing that because we dug and dug and called and called and emailed everybody we could, a friend of mine and I. And that information was buried. So we need to protect Indiana in each and every spot. And this team's responsibility is Hammond. So let's save those woods.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Scott.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't know the procedure for a list. And I would like to ask a question.
You can approach it. We're not going to answer any questions, but you can express your opinion and then maybe talk to somebody up at the meeting.
Okay, my name is Paula Taylor and I am, I have a question whether Hammond has an anti-pet mill ordinance. I don't know if there is. I had seen excerpts of information on the internet and something about April of last year, there was going to be a finalization to that. And I had some concerns. While driving, I was very surprised to see puppy pet stores to begin with. So I thought I'd go in and one in particular, both of them are in Calumet Avenue. One in particular has their puppies in crates without a solid floor, but the wires. So that in itself is, is unhealthy for, for the puppies. And there's a few red flags that, after some research, I would question whether they are from other sources or other states and sent here or maybe these stores were in another state and then moved to Indiana. But they, they're very odd mixes of, of, of animals and that, that is one red flag for the, some of the puppy mills. Now, I've not been involved in this subject other than I just was very surprised that we had puppy stores in, in Hammond. And so my question, and I tried to find something with it, maybe I missed. I knew I had less than a week if I wanted to come here to, to ask this question, but I really couldn't find if there was an ordinance in Hammond on anti-pet mill ordinance. There's not? No. Okay. So just thought I'd point it out, 6931 Calumet Avenue is one pet store and the other is 6434 Calumet Avenue. The 6931 Calumet is the, is the pet store that have the crates room filled with just crate on the bottom for the puppies to walk. The other facility at 6434 has a lobby. You look at pictures, if you want to see a puppy, he will go back behind the front of the store and bring that puppy out. So you really can't see how they're housed. So I just thought I would bring it up and question and I was just curious. And so I thank you for your time. And I'm sorry I didn't understand the procedure of signing in before. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.